It's eight thirty, twenty seven. We're here for the purpose of the Committee of the Whole. The Governor of the State of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak restricting individuals to gatherings of ten persons or less. And all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the mayor of the city of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting for the November twenty-third, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole meeting may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All the aldermen participating on a November twenty-third, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussions and testimony during the meeting. That having been said, based on our most recent physical, I mean technological challenges, I'm going to do a sound check right now. City manager, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Treasurer Liebovitz, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alderman Deuter.
I can hear you, Steve.
Thanks, Elaine. Alderman Deuter.
Yes, I can hear you.
Director Trosin.
I can hear you, Mayor.
Alderman Cahill.
Yes, Mayor, I can hear you.
Alderman Mulliner.
I can hear you.
Alderman Brennan.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Park.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Hanquist.
Yes, I can hear you.
Alderman Kennedy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Palomsky.
Yes.
Alderman Levin.
Hi.
Alderman Veremis.
Yes, I can hear you.
Alderman Toledo.
Yep.
I don't know if I'm repeating now. You guys keep jumping around. Alderman Dunn.
Yes, I can hear.
Alderman Bram.
Yes, I can hear everyone.
Alderman Park.
Yeah, and you got me already.
Okay, Clerk Tamer.
I can hear you, Mayor.
I think that's everybody. I'm going to go out on a limited staff. Stenson, Freeman, Johnson, and Burris, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'll take it. Thanks, Kent. Okay. Since we skipped it due to time, but let's not skip it altogether, I'm going to ask everybody to rise wherever you are and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Brennan.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Veremis.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park. Here. Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
I have thirteen present, zero absent, one vacancy.
Thirteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum. Two announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Or anybody, any announcements from the Zoom call? City manager.
Yes, I have one. I'm pleased to announce that the DuPage County Health Department has announced a new testing site for COVID testing. And that's at the Odeum in Villa Park, which is at one thousand thirty-three North Villa Avenue. They will be open from ten to six or until six hundred tests are completed each day. And their hours started today, and it will be today through Wednesday. And then they will be off for Thanksgiving break, and they will restart on Sunday, the twenty-ninth, and go through December fourth. And that is free for everyone. It's just first come, first served, and it's a drive-up testing. We have that on our website already.
Okay, good. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to public comment. City manager, anybody in the council chambers?
There is no one here.
I see, I think it's, I think it's Lori Hayes over there in the Public Works Annex.
Yes, so there's.
And Mike Kopp? No.
It's Cory, too.
Oh, hi Cory. Anybody there?
Nobody's here.
Anybody on the line?
Nobody.
No, sir.
Okay. And I assume Clerk Tamer, to the best of your knowledge, no one has signed up?
No, there wasn't, Mayor.
Okay, so that's going to do it for announcements and public comment. On to agenda item four. We have approval of some minutes. First one I'm going to take by itself. I need a motion to retain the executive session minutes and not release from July eighth, two thousand nineteen, retain as confidential. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Mulliner. Discussion. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll. Vote. Oh, sorry. Hold on, hold on. Alderman Levin. Got you. There you go.
I got it. You know, I read those three times to make sure I got it right. I didn't see anything confidential. Is this something that the city attorney has declared to be confidential? Or is this, we already sold, we already purchased the property. It doesn't mention anything about strategy. Is there a reason we're keeping this?
I can, I can check in with the city attorney. Their recommendation was not to release at this time.
Usually I go along with, but I really don't understand it on this one, but thank you.
You can motion to postpone to date certain if you want. Alderman Levin.
I would move to postpone to a date certain to get input from the city attorney on the confidentiality of this.
So I will, I will amend that to postpone until the next city council meeting, which is December seventh. You good with that?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second? Alderman Bram, seconds. Discussion on postponing agenda item four A until December seventh. Any discussion? Seeing none, I ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Brennan.
Hi.
Mulliner.
Hi.
Deuter.
Hi.
Veremis.
Hi.
Dunn.
Hi.
Bram.
Hi.
Palomsky.
Hi.
Cahill.
Hi.
Toledo.
Hi.
Park.
Hi.
Levin.
Hi.
Kennedy.
Hi.
Hanquist.
Hi.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Agenda item four A will be moved to the December seventh meeting. I've talked to council about this regarding agenda items for A, I'm sorry, for B, C, D, and E. I can treat those as a consent agenda or ask for a motion to approve those in their entirety in the absence of any alderman who may want to pull out an individual item, and we can motion and discuss those individually. Is there anybody who wishes to specifically discuss any one of the items B, C, D, or E individually? I don't see anybody. So I will entertain a motion to approve agenda items for B, C, D, and E, December second, two thousand nineteen, Committee of the Whole minutes. November second, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole minutes, November nineteenth. I'm sorry, November ninth, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole minutes, and November sixteenth, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole minutes. Motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Toledo. Discussion. Clerk Tamer.
Brennan.
Hi.
Mulliner.
Hi.
Deuter.
Hi.
Veremis.
Hi.
Dunn.
Hi.
Bram.
Hi.
Palomsky.
Hi.
Cahill.
Hi.
Toledo.
Hi.
Park.
Hi.
Levin.
Hi.
Kennedy.
Hi.
Hanquist.
Hi.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion to approve agenda items, agenda items for B, C, D, and E is approved. On to agenda item five, continued review of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget. At, at the end of our last meeting, we had reviewed all line items as laid out by staff for the agendas through the, through the entire review of this budget, we have created circle back items. City manager, do you have anything you want to add or any council member want to discuss items in the budget before we go back to our specific circle back items? City manager.
I would just state that we had nineteen circle backs that we addressed in the memo, thanks to Tom and Lori and all the directors. And we also included attachments A through I, which we thought helped, would, would help address the, the individual questions. So we stand ready to answer any further questions on those, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the aldermen before we jump into the circle backs? Okay, seeing none, as city manager mentioned, I think we have nineteen circle back items. The hope and intent is that we get through all items tonight. For those who have not been through this process before, obviously, circle backs are what have been requested either in meetings or individually through direct communication between elected officials and staff, and you will find those on the circle back list. Many times, the circle back item that was requested by the elected official has been answered. So my point is, don't expect to see a motion on every single circle back item. A lot of times, the alderman who asks for a specification says, thanks for the specification. I have my answers. However, there is also the possibility that this is the time, and we find it most efficient. This is the time when, if there are going to be suggestions to make line item changes to the budget. This is the time we typically do it. We do it through our normal process of Robert's rules where we have motions and seconds, discussions and votes. The intent is to provide staff with direction. By the end of this meeting, as I mentioned a couple of months ago when we started this, we are required by state law to pass a budget. We're at, we're kind of on the home stretch here. So let's do what we can to get through tonight, provide staff with as specific a direction as possible, assuming we get through all of it tonight. We will not need a fifth Monday meeting, November thirtieth, next Monday, and we will be voting on this on the seventh. That is the hope, but certainly if the time is needed, we can come back on the thirtieth. Any questions? City manager, I'll turn it over to you to start going down our circle back list. And I would ask any alderman who, obviously, if you put it on the circle back, please let us know if you got your answer. If you have additional questions in addition, if there is going to be any motions or specific discussion, I would ask that you pull out your budget book and let us know page and light item. Thank you. City manager, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is regarding the North York TIF, TIF four. Alderman Bram had asked to bring back this item, and it's regarding paving. Typically, we would, we would try to get paving done in the general fund, with the general fund, this being a year where budgets are low. And this area being in a TIF, staff thought using TIF dollars to help aid this would be possible. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alderman Bram with any questions.
Alderman Bram.
I was waiting for that acknowledgement. So yes, thank you, City Manager Grabowski. I voiced concerns in regards to this previously. This TIF is relatively young. There is much opportunity for this TIF to redevelop properties, consolidate properties, and have what I would deem to be, as well as a good number of my neighbors, better use of the, the properties within this TIF. My concern is that we're utilizing what would typically be, not saying always, but typically be capital improvement funds for street reconstruction, and I believe this item was also new sidewalk construction in the industrial or business park as well. And that is depleting those monies that would otherwise be utilized for, again, what I've already stated, for redevelopment of the TIF in its own accord. So with that said, and I don't know how I would do this because I've never done this before, but I would like to make a motion, and I would ask for assistance on this. If it gets a second, that is, to move these expenditures from the TIF to the capital improvement fund. There's really not a line item to do this. I know it's in the capital expenditure budget, so I don't know the protocol to, to make that, but that is my motion and my request.
Oh, yeah, give me one second there, Alderman. Isn't this? Is this part of the roadway improvements on page two thirty?
Yes, it is.
Line item eighty fifteen. So what you're saying, Alderman Bram, is you want to remove, I just want to be specific, you want to remove all five hundred and fifteen thousand from this line item? And put it somewhere?
Well, that's the.
I guess I had to say, yeah, I guess what you're saying is it's in there. The question is, do we pay for it with TIF funds?
Exactly. I don't know how to make that motion.
Yeah, okay. City manager, is there? Is there anywhere in this budget that indicates that that five hundred and fifteen thousand is getting paid by TIF funds?
In the CEB portion, that's it.
Well, I think it's in the on page two thirty, right? Program includes.
Yeah, but on two thirty, it doesn't say where the dollars are coming from, right?
So.
It doesn't really say it on the J form either.
Is that a line of credit, or do we have money in the bank on that? I'm conferring with, with Tom Trosin as we.
So we would have money in.
Okay. So there is money in TIF four, which would pay for this right now. If we were to take it out of this, as Alderman Bram is motioning, it would go into general fund. And so then, when it goes into the general fund, we would either have to, what we typically do is move money from the capital improvement fund into the general fund to cover that. However, we have no money in the capital improvement fund to do that. So it would have to come out of general fund, which means we would either use more fund balance or have to cut five hundred and fifteen thou, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, five hundred and fifteen thousand from general fund expenses. Tom has a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Trosin.
So I just want to confirm. So the five fifteen includes the concrete streets and also some North York roadway improvement dollars for the five fifteen. I just want to make sure, is the motion to cover the sidewalk cost, that's in eighty twenty-six. There's a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars and nine hundred dollars for sidewalk improvements also.
Now, hold on, let's, I know we're clarifying the motion, but let's get it right. Tom. I'm easier. So on page two thirty, under capital outlay, there's public improvements eighty fifteen, which is five hundred and fifteen thousand. And then there is eighty twenty-six, which is a hundred and ninety-three, nine hundred. Alderman Bram, I think you referred only to sidewalks? Is that the case?
All right, in my discussion, I mentioned both, but I'm speaking primarily of the streets.
Okay, so your motion remains somehow allocate, pay for the five hundred and fifteen that's shown in this line item through, well, not through TIF funds, but through general fund, it sounds like. Yeah? Okay. All right, Tom, you want to add to that? You, I appreciate the clarification about the sidewalks, but it's Alderman Bram specifically referring to five hundred and fifteen thousand. So I'm going to try to state the motion. Alderman Bram, correct me if I'm wrong, and then we'll have, see if you get a second, then we'll have discussion. So the motion is to allocate, to make sure that the capital outlay identified in page two thirty, line, line eighty fifteen of five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I guess the best way to put it is not paid for through TIF funds.
That's, yeah, that's the best way I could think of.
Because we really don't know how we're going to pay for it. We can pay for it at like a half a dozen other ways. So, you know, whether it's emergency cash or general fund or whatever, but not TIF funds, I think, is what you're aiming at. Okay, we have a motion to make sure that the, the, the budget, the number indicated in our budget, page two thirty, eighty fifteen, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, is not paid for with TIF funds from the associated TIF. Do I have a second? Alderman Palomsky. You raised your hand. So give me a verbal yes, your second.
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion. You can raise your hand either electronically on the little participant, or you can wave at the camera. Alderman Mulliner.
Just a couple of quick comments about that. Number one, we have no way to pay for it other than reducing the budget for something else right now in the general fund, which to me is problematic. And the second thing is that one of the functions of TIF is to improve infrastructure, and this seems to be one of the biggest components of infrastructure is roadways and street and sidewalks.
Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I agree. It is, I think it's, while we might think top of mind, TIF dollars should be used for, let's say, enticing somebody to develop or aiding in that. I do believe that when you improve an area, it also draws in more potential developers, too. So I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I also, and I do believe there's some leeway for this. If there's an opportunity for development, we don't know when those will come along. So I would hope that, you know, this is not encumbered in a way where we couldn't move forward with, you know, some new development coming along. And I, I think my biggest concern about this, I don't think it's a bad idea, but at this point, I couldn't point to another area to reduce for, you know, for us to move this into the capital fund. I appreciate the sentiment. I just, I still think there's enough flexibility with how it's laid out to say it's coming from TIF funds, and should a project come about, we still could act on that. But by saying no, not to support it from TIF funds right now, would mean I don't know if I could prioritize this against all the other projects that have already been earmarked in the capital budget. Thank you.
Anyone else? I saw Alderman Levin had his hand up electronically for a minute. I don't know if that was inadvertent or, eh, what the heck? Alderman Levin.
Yeah, I think I am going to agree with Alderman Mulliner. We have done street improvements before. We've done sidewalk improvements. Part of the idea is to make the area more attractive to people who might come there. And I'm really concerned that, you know, if we take it out of the budget, it'd have to be a specific recommendation of where it's coming out of. I don't think we can pass a budget that just leaves a hole in it of that number.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Well, we've approved many of stormwater projects without having a revenue source to pay for the bonds we shortly issued after that. So it has been the consensus and the practice of this council to do so in the past. In regards to the comments made of paying for street reconstruction, I agree, it has been done in the past. But it also has been done in the past primarily, if not exclusively, in the central business district TIF, which not only at that time concluded a twenty-three-year TIF, but it was in the extension of the TIF is when those funds were utilized for street reconstruction, when the majority of the redevelopment, if not all, but at least the majority of the redevelopment was completed in that TIF, and we were wrapping up sidewalk construction as well as doing some street construction and beautification overall. That is not the case in this TIF. This TIF has, in my estimation, barely begun. The finances are there, as City Manager Grabowski has mentioned, but that doesn't mean that's where it should be spent or allocated because of the fact that if we do redo these streets, and we, there are many potential developments along this stretch, we're going to be tearing up brand-new streets. As everyone knows, there was great concern voiced by the neighborhood in regards to the proposal by Mariannals on the intersection of York and Crestview. That is one opportunity, along with other properties on that side of the street, the east side of the street, that's ripe for development and/or possible consolidation of properties. So yes, I agree with some of the statements that it has happened in the past, but not in the same circumstances. It was when the TIF was extended a second time, and there really weren't many projects left in that TIF to do, and therefore, street reconstruction, pavers, and beautification was then being pursued for the CBD or downtown TIF.
Additional comments? All right, I'm going to ask for a call on the vote to have this line item paid for, best way I can say it, not with TIF funds. So, and I, and I is a support of Alderman Bram's, and Alderman Palomsky's second. It's, it's, an I is in support of their motion. Clerk Tamer.
Brennan.
No.
Mulliner.
Oh.
Deuter.
No.
Veremis.
No.
Dunn.
No.
Bram.
Hi.
Palomsky.
No.
Cahill.
No.
Toledo.
No.
Park.
No.
Levin.
No.
Kennedy.
No.
Hanquist.
No.
One I, twelve nays.
One I, twelve nays, motion fails. Back to our agenda. Additional discussion on circle back item number one, North York redevelopment TIF. City manager, anything to add? Alderman Bram, anything to add?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, let's go to circle back number two.
Thank you. This was, this was a question posed by Alderman Brennan, and he was looking for a breakdown of payouts in the parking system fund. So we included the, the breakout on debt structure and payments that are due in twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three. And we're happy to answer any questions if Alderman Brennan has them.
Alderman Brennan, or anyone else? Any questions as it relates to this circle back item?
No, Director Trosin answered all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? City manager, number three.
Thank you. This is a question about the MUF. Alderman Toledo had emailed us a couple of questions on the MUF, and I know a lot of it is waiting on the report from Baxter and Woodman regarding the rates, the rate structure. So Alderman Toledo, if you want to add anything to that.
Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. Yes, for three, four, and five, we don't need to discuss, for, for my, my purposes, I don't need to discuss those tonight. We are expecting the Baxter and Woodman report in Finance Committee on December fourteenth, and we're addressing all of that and more at that time. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take them one at a time. Anyone else on agenda item three? I'm sorry, not agenda item three, circle back item three. Okay, circle, I already, I know they're all attributed to Alderman Toledo. Circle back number four, anyone else besides Alderman Toledo? And number five? City manager, let's jump to circle back number six, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that Alderman Bram asked about, and it was regarding the rapid response vehicle and whether or not we perhaps should look at a second rescue vehicle. Chief Freeman put together a memo marking out some some points in how successful the vehicle has been and also added some statistics on COVID, as was asked about by Alderman Bram. Happy to answer any questions. I know Chief Freeman's on the line.
Alderman Bram, I recall you pulled this, I think it was with regard to ALS and BLS and the rapid response. Any specific questions that you'd like to answer?
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank Chief Freeman and his staff, providing me additional information on this. I was asking about mutual aid that we provide from other communities. In our last discussion of the budget, could others mute?
Point of audio.
So so I was asking about the at the last budget discussion on this in regards to the rapid response vehicle and ALS overall, as the mayor stated. My concerns are that having, and Chief Freeman has stated, having the rapid response vehicle has assisted, that it may or may not be enough. The information I was referring to before was in regards to mutual aid that we provide and also we receive from other communities. Now get to that in a second. Some of the research that I did in regards to ALS and some of the communities relatively close to us. The the only community that I found that does not have fire engines and trucks providing ALS is the city of Elmhurst. I looked at Downers Grove, and again, this is for me doing research, Lombard, Naperville, Oakbrook, Addison, and Villa Park all have their fire engines and trucks ALS capable. Obviously, all ambulances are have paramedics and they're ALS capable as well. Some of the other things I looked at in regards to rapid response vehicles, and when this issue was discussed three years ago, I think we've already touched on that. Where Naperville has something similar to what we implemented, and obviously they implemented it before us. But we are the only community that has a rapid response vehicle. I want to focus, though, on Elmhurst. Comparing that to Downers Grove, Buffalo Grove, and Lombard. From a city geographical perspective, they're all about the same size. Actually, Downers Grove is larger in square miles. Downers Grove, Buffalo Grove have three ambulances where we have the two. Again, they have fire engines and fire trucks that have ALS personnel on them. Chief Freeman made a statement at last meeting that the rapid response vehicle was at the North Fire Station and now is, I guess I'll say housed on the the South Side. My concerns of that is when it comes to looking at mutual aid and the mutual aid statistics. One, the north side of town is obviously further away from the hospital now, since the hospital has moved many a years ago now to the south side of town. That is a concern. And when you look at the mutual aid response as well as who we provide to, the north side of town requires more mutual aid responses, at least for 2017 and 2018. I didn't complete all the statistics for 2019. But as an example, Addison, we provided 27 instances and received 10 mutually aid assistance from Addison. Bensonville, 41 in 2018 was provided to. What does that mean to us? What that means to us is that our equipment is elsewhere, and therefore we're either needing to receive mutual aid, which would then cause a well, significant in regards to healthcare, healthcare response, significant delay in receiving healthcare due to the, what I would say, significant differences on the needs on the communities around the north side of Elmhurst versus the south side of Elmhurst. Another community would be Northlake, and I'm assuming this is because of Concord assisted living. But 100 in 2018, we provided 105 instances to Northlake, 105. No other was close to that. In 2019, it was 84 to Northlake. So we don't have ALS at our disposal when you do that comparison from the north to south, basing it off of mutual aid responses and receiving from other communities. And that is, to me, that is a significant bullet point. Chief Freeman has stated that ALS, the rapid response vehicle, has been beneficial to the community. My concern is, as I stated at the last budget discussion, is that enough? Is the whole city of Elmhurst having the same amount of response time that is necessary? Obviously, we all know heart attacks and strokes, seconds count. And being even further from the hospital on the north side of town or where Fire Station, I always get them confused, I think that's Fire Station One, would assist. That would be a higher risk to have that ALS. So what I'm proposing, after much analysis of the data that I received from Chief Freeman, and then the subsequent information that was provided to all of us, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget on page, this one time, Mayor, I'm able to find the page. On page 150, line item 110-0084-442-30-01. From, and I do need assistance on this, but from 227,400 to an increased amount to allow for a second rapid response vehicle. And I don't know, I tried to find that report. I want to say it's 100 and something thousand dollars. For some reason, 136,000 stays in mind, but I don't have that dollar amount. So that's why I said the general motion of increasing to allow the capability of a second rapid response vehicle.
Okay. I understand what you're asking for. City manager, do you have a solid ballpark number?
My recollection.
Go ahead.
My recollection is 164,000 is what we increased the contract by for Rescue One.
Okay. And I pardon me, I know that we have a sophisticated contract with with Superior. Did we add 160, call 165,000? Did we add 165,000 to their operating budget? And did we divide that over 12 months?
I believe it did go into the formula, because as you said, it's a complicated contract and sophisticated. And and what it what ended up happening is, as they bill for insurance and and reap that money back and 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 fill the contract dollar amount that we have with them outside of what we pay them monthly. It it basically comes out of the billings that they get, and so it it actually didn't end up costing more out of our pocket. So I guess let me go back to what you're now I understand what you were asking about dividing it by 12. That that came out of the what we used to get as a rebate from them.
So we didn't bump up their monthly operational number? We just took it out of the potential?
I don't think so. I think it just came out of the rebate at the end of the year.
All right. Okay, 165,000, are you pretty comfortable with that number?
I am, yes.
Alderman Bram, I'm more comfortable putting a dollar amount to it with an intention versus just saying what we think it, you know, just versus giving it direction since it's a budget. So are you okay amending your motion to add 165,000 to line item 3001, page 150 for the intent of adding a second vehicle? You're on mute. Oh. You're nodding your head. You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion. Looks like staff is having a conversation. I'll entertain. So we have a motion to increase that line item by the discussed amount, 165,000. Do we have a second? I don't see a second. City manager, am I missing anybody?
I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay. Motion fails due to lack of second. Additional conversation. Alderman Bram, I think that covers line, circle back number six. Anything else?
Toledo.
Okay, number seven, library funds.
Mayor, I'm sorry, it looks like Alderman Toledo has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a comment on that motion that did not move forward, that I think that that concept may have merit. And in fact, Chief Freeman mentioned that in his memo. You know, I don't know, I'll speak for myself and not on behalf of the rest of the council. A decision like that, to me, is far too serious to take with a five minute discussion during a circle back time within the budget. So I would recommend if anyone on the council feels strongly about that, to submit a referral and have a public discussion with evaluation of data and cost benefits. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Agenda item seven, library funds.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Alderman Bram and Alderman Dunn have their hands up.
Okay. I'm going to go to Alderman Dunn, then to Alderman Bram.
Yeah, the only comment I want to make is I appreciate Chief Freeman's analysis of rapid response and the one statistic that really I think is important is that that rapid response is arriving at 98% of the time earlier than the the fire, full fire trucks with that personnel. So I I would say it's doing its job, and I'm happy to see that. Thanks.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. And I agree with Alderman Dunn's comment there. I'm not saying that it's not doing its job. I'm just voicing concerns in regards to making sure that we have the ability to have ALS provided all throughout Elmhurst in what I would deem to be a timely manner. With that said, Alderman Toledo's point is an accurate one, too. I don't know if it's a five minute discussion. This was pulled during budget discussion, so there was opportunity to discuss this multiple weeks, even prior to that. And I know it was a heated, or not a heated, but it was a well well discussed when this concept came up three years ago. With that, that's where it just depends. I've heard different Aldermen on this dais say it needs to be in the budget before you discuss it. And then others say, no, discuss it first in committee, and it doesn't need to be in the budget. And it seems to be depending on when those discussions and what the topic may be, different sides of that argument are taken. Alderman Toledo's point is make sure that we have a referral first before putting in the budget. Well, budget is a plan. Doesn't mean you have to spend it, and everybody on the dais, I believe, has nodded a headed yes on that. That just because it's in the budget doesn't mean you need to spend it. I am doing what I believe Alderman Palmski has has referred to in past budget discussions requesting it to go in the budget first, prior to discussing it in committee and therefore at the city council level. So I I'm trying to keep track on what is the preference of the full city council in this regard. I'm doing what I've heard in the past that is requested, is it should be in the budget before you talk about it in committee. I think that it is worthy to put it in the budget. I think ALS is very important. I think that making sure that we have the appropriate ALS response time throughout the city, this is not committing anyone to moving forward with a referral or report or even moving forward with a second ALS vehicle. This is an opportune time because I believe the contract is up sometime, I want to say it's November of next year, I don't recall. But I believe the contract that we currently have is up next year. So this is the opportune time to put this in the budget. Therefore, being able to discuss this in committee.
Additional comments or questions before we move on from a circle back number six? Okay, city manager.
Alderman Levin has Alderman Levin has his hand up.
Whoops, Alderman Levin.
You know, I I understand what you're saying, Alderman Bram, but we haven't identified a problem yet. We've identified some statistics about what's happening in other communities and in terms of the number of times we're on a mutual aid, but that hasn't identified a problem where we're not getting a a rapid response to someone who needs one. And when you compare to other communities, I would dare say of all the ones that you mentioned, we're the only one that has a separate, you know, that where the ambulance service is not part of their fire department. So it's a it's a very different setup. But if you're if you want to look at it for, if you think the contract, as you say, is up in the end of next year, then now is not the time to put it in the budget, but that would be the, next year would be the year to look at it before we get into 2022.
Let me just clarify and put my two cents in as someone who's been on council for 14 years now. We've done it both ways, and there's no right or wrong answer. We have added line items in the budget during budget season and during budget discussion, and we've also done it through referral, independent of the budget. The budget's a planning document. We got to give staff some sort of roadmap and work with them to give them something to execute against. But any large ticket item goes back through us, through the committee process regardless. But there is no right or wrong answer. You can put it in now. Doesn't mean you're committing to it, because this is certainly, and this was going to be my comment, had there been a second, which was whether council decides to approve this motion or not. It something like this would go through committee anyway. And and whether it was in the budget, great, or not in the budget, it does not prohibit this discussion moving forward. It doesn't prohibit, you know, as others have suggested. If it doesn't end up in the budget, council is more than able to do a referral and put a review in that way. So there's no right or wrong answer. It really depends on what we're discussing at the time. If there's not an inclination to do it during budget season, then I would encourage any Alderman to issue a referral. But there certainly is no right or wrong answer on this. And I said at the very beginning of this budget discussion two months ago. Voting for this budget as a roadmap for city council is the way I look at this. But voting for this budget doesn't commit. We could, we could all vote for this budget. Council could vote to approve this budget two weeks from now. And come middle of January, decide not to spend a dime on roads. Council has that discretion at almost any time. So I ask you to keep that in mind as we move through this. Any other comments? Fourth time, let's go to Agenda Item Seven, city manager.
Thank you. I move on to Agenda Item Seven. This was a question from Alderman Toledo regarding the cash balance that the library carries. I would remind the council, I know we talked about this, that they are primarily property tax driven on their revenues, and so you can see by the graph in attachment B that they get their their two disbursements in June and September, and that's the spikes that they carry. The lines are very consistent from year to year, and Alderman Toledo has further questions, we're happy to answer them.
Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I appreciated that chart. I understand how the library operates. Director Trizina and I spoke today. I still think that there is an opportunity for the library to potentially not carry as much cash on hand. Even in May, which is their lowest kind of balance month awaiting their June tax payment. The lowest, they they still carried 1.2 million. You know, I think that there is an argument to be made that they You know, I think that there is an argument to be made that they might not need to have that much to get them through May. And that's something that Director Trizina and I discussed and that he, so that he would discuss with the library for their next year's budget. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments on this circle back item? Alderman Bram, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just because I would like to get some clarification and maybe this is more for Director Trozine. My understanding is we have little to almost no say of what the policies of the library board is. It is its own government entity. Therefore, they construct the budget and it's essentially a pass through through us, the city council.
I'll let Director Trozine or staff answer that. And then I see Alderman Mulliner has his hand up. I can answer. Let me, let me take the first shot at it. Yeah, by state law, they, they, they decide what they want to levy and they, they develop their own budget. And they're gracious enough, state law is gracious enough where we have to pass whatever they say. Is, is, is my, it's my interpretation of it. So I think you're right, Alderman Bram. I'm going to go to Alderman Mulliner.
You're not muted. I mean, you're muted, Mark.
There we go. I'm going to echo what the mayor just said. Having sat on the library board for six years, the library board is a pseudo separate entity of the, of the city. And basically they put together a budget, they manage their own funds. And then at the end of the year, we basically review that budget and have really very little say on how, how it's managed. But it is something that's there that we have to pass through. And it basically becomes more of a pass through for us than it does anything more than that.
Doesn't mean we can't have a conversation with them, but our ability, yeah, our ability is limited in terms of actual direction. Any additional comments or questions? City manager, number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a question that Alderman Brennan wanted to revisit. And in your packet as attachment C was a very comprehensive memo from Mike Cop, Mike Stenson, Tom Trizina, Emily Wagner, and I appreciate all their work on that. Rather than try to summarize that, I'll turn to Alderman Brennan to ask if he has any questions.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. It was quite comprehensive, city manager. Thank you for that. I guess my, so I don't have any further questions with respect to the why. But as we go back to the budget, I recollect seeing the, assuming an increase in software in, out in twenty twenty-two, I think. The professional services that would be required to implement the ERP system. Is that also accounted for out into the future? Or is that something that is, the software selection needs to be done in order to understand that outlier of cash?
City manager.
Yeah, so that is a best estimate. I'm sorry. I was conferring with Director Trizina. That's a best estimate of what it would take to get that software in place. It does not take into account the future years of anyone. Is it a maintenance question that you're asking Alderman Brennan?
No, so, so I guess the, the three ninety-five? Is that the, on page one eleven, eighty thirty-one?
Feel free, Tom.
So that, that estimate is strictly a portion of the software costs that, that we anticipate. We, we don't have anything built into the budget right now. As far as would we hire contractual services, professional services to help us implement all of that stuff? That's probably what we would do, but right now it's sort of just a planning amount that we have out there to communicate to the council that this is something we seriously need to consider and look at.
Thank you. That's the clarification I was looking for. I mean, given the age of our systems and the benefits that we would get from upgrading them, we have to do it at some point. So I'm fine with the direction. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments on circle back number eight? Alderman Cahill.
Having gone through this implementation of ERP in the last five years, I would just want to comment that it will, whatever you plan for the software, you want to double it because implementation is about, is about equal to the software cost. So just for budgeting purposes and then wrapping your head around it, you need to make sure that, that is, that is a consideration. And but ERP, a good ERP can change the world for your company or for the city council or, and the community.
Additional comments? Seeing none, let's move on. Nine, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question on cable television and specifically Alderman Bram had asked the breakdown of what we record and broadcast. We're happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city manager. The only question I have, and thank you for that information, is when, I know it's a professional service, so we don't have to go out to bid. Over the recent past, I've seen issues with our broadcasts, our city council broadcasts recently. The Aaron Jason did a presentation during a city council meeting. And for the first fifteen, twenty minutes, there was no sound. There's been delivery issues with getting it on cable television. And so over the past few years, I've seen what I would at least deem from the outside, a little bit of a degradation of service. So it's not really a budgetary discussion, I guess, now that I think of it. But I think that maybe this is an opportunity to discuss. I think this was a hundred thousand dollar budgeted line item going out for bid or going at least looking out to see if there's other providers out there that would be able to do the job and maybe even at a better cost.
Okay, additional comments? All right, circle back ten.
Thank you. This is visitor in tourism. Alderman Bram had requested information that we included as, it's been D.
No further questions. All my questions were answered. Thank you.
Okay. Also under visitor interim was Public Arts Commission. That's number eleven, city manager.
It was the same. We included information that Alderman Bram had requested. Happy to answer any questions.
No further questions. All my questions were answered. Thank you.
All right, Alderman, I'm sorry. City manager, number twelve, admin and finance consulting professional services.
Yes, thank you. This is information that Alderman Bram had requested regarding two consultants that we use, Charlie Van Slike and Ken Bartels. What I would add to the information that we had provided. And we've, you've heard a common theme this year that COVID really changed everything. Not a surprise to anybody. Hold on one second. Sorry, I had to mute Tom there. I was getting an echo. So we, we were on schedule to spend less with Ken Bartel's contract this year. That was scheduled in the budget. And he was going to work on a, an industrial park or business park plan. Well, of course, that got turned around way in March when this hit. However, considering the amount of contact that we had with individual business owners, it was at least tenfold to what we would normally do. Ken really was invaluable in helping Aaron Jason to reach out to individual business owners, not just as a group, but individual business owners, especially the smaller business owners who were scared, who were looking for information, looking for advice, looking for contacts. And so a majority of the money on the economic development side for Mr. Bartels was shifted from a plan for the business park to contacts within the business park. And then I also want to note that we spent about ten thousand dollars less on the museum budget. That is typically part of Mr. Bartel's contract as well. And happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Any questions or comments? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. Just to note, Mr. Bartel's role is item number thirteen on the circle back list, not number twelve. So I'll speak to that because city manager Grabowski spoke to that in his comments.
Hold on there, Alderman Bram. Hold on there. Let me, I, I, I see what you're doing. I just want to make sure. City manager, were you commenting solely about Bartels and not Vance like, or were you combining the two?
I was combining the two.
Okay.
Okay.
Alderman Bram, the floor is yours. I just want to make sure we didn't skip something. Go ahead.
Okay, I was just going to go back to twelve. I heard Bartels, Mr. Bartels's name and not Vance like. So I was just going to item thirteen. So for both of these, and I will add my comments to both roles. And it's, it's again, not about the individuals, but about the roles. I think our times, our organizational structure, I shouldn't say I think, our organizational structure has changed significantly over the time since we've had both of these roles as consultants. We now have someone leading, an assistant city manager, leading the economic development for the city of Elmhurst. We also have Aaron Jason, part of that team as well. So also from the other side, I know the role of Mr. Bartels has changed over time as well. It was primarily for a while, I think it was called at that time, the historical museum compared to the history museum, as well as communication, et cetera. But again, both of the, the, both of these roles has changed because of the fact our organization has changed. We have full-time staff to do all these duties that both of these consultants are, are doing today. City manager Grabowski spoke to Mr. Bartels's role and how that has changed due to COVID. My concerns are that even though that may have been very beneficial overall, that higher paid consultants are doing an activity like contacting our businesses. I don't remember what the hourly wages for both. I thought one of them was a hundred dollars an hour. And I don't recall the other, if it was fifty or somewhere between fifty and a hundred. So I think times are changing and I do know that both of these, neither of these contracts are up at this time. But again, going back to the point of this is a planning document. I would like to make a motion, and I'll do it for the first, that the budget and because of the, the dollars for both of these roles comes from different areas within the budget, I'm just going to make a general motion to say that the funds allocated for this expenditure for the role that in this case, Mr. Vance like plays would be reduced by fifty percent.
Okay, so you give me a second. Jim, are there, sorry, city manager. Are Vance like, and I want to make sure, I want to ask a question because I think I know the answer. But are Vance like and Bartels on one individual line item each, or are they sprinkled around, kind of like IT and other stuff?
They're in the memo, Mayor.
I'm looking at the memo. It's not, so that's my point. Are they all sprinkled around that way? What about Vance like, or is this, is this both of them combined?
So
Oh, no, Bartels is the second one. I got it.
Yes, Mr. Vance like is broken out into those four groups and Mr. Bartels is broken out into the six groups.
Okay, so trying to figure out how to do this because we, we we have a contract with each of these consulting firms, people, whatever you want to say, that goes three years. Although it does have, I know they do have termination clauses in them. So I'm not sure how to do this.
But with that said, I mean, I'm not saying zero out any, either of these roles, right? So it wouldn't terminate their contract in any way, shape or form. It would reduce what we have budgeted or allocated.
Okay, all right, I got it. I got it. I got it. We can reduce every line item here by fifty percent. That's going to be the cleanest way to do it. So if we refer to the memo, the circle back memo, so page three, circle back number twelve rolls around to the top of page four. Alderman Bram, do you want to, pardon me, can you clarify? Do you want to try to kill two birds with one stone, or do you want to reduce Vance like first and then Bartel second?
Just in case, I'd like to do them individually. I don't think there would be much discussion for the
Okay, all right. So I'm going to try to summarize your motion. Entertain a motion to reduce expenditures as listed and broken out in the circle back document under number twelve, which is the top of page four. For Charlie Vance like, reduce each line item as identified by fifty percent. Is that a fair summation, Alderman Bram?
That's correct.
Yes? Sorry, you cut out. Okay, all right. So we have that motion. Do I have a second? I don't see anybody, city manager. Okay, so that motion fails for lack of a second. I'll go to you, Alderman Bram. Do you want to make a similar motion for thirteen for Mr. Bartel's services?
Yes, please.
Okay, so
Mr. Mayor, Danny Palomski is your hand up.
Okay, so before that motion, I guess. Alderman Palomski, you want to add to the conversation before I go to Alderman Bram's motion?
Yes, please. So I do want to say I understand that COVID has changed some of what our residents need. But I also would like to point out that the council did approve a part-time communications person last year and that that person had been either extended an offer or close to that point. So I think perhaps what we're seeing is instead of the additional assistance that I believe has been justified, that, that I think there was going to be some relief in the communications department. Some of that responsibility has been allocated for the consultant. So I know we can't make a decision like this tonight, but just something for, you know, for the back burner. Perhaps we're seeing a little shift here because that, that position is needed and it still has not been filled. So that's all.
Okay, additional comments? All right, I'll go to Alderman Bram. Alderman Bram, you indicated that you wanted to make a motion similar to your last motion. So I'm looking at circle back item number thirteen. The motion would be to reduce the line items pertaining to the consultant Ken Bartel as listed in the circle back, reduce each one of those line items by fifty percent. Is that a fair summary of your motion?
That is fair.
Okay, do I, do I hear a second on that motion? City manager, am I missing anybody?
No, sir.
Motion fails due to lack of second additional conversation regarding circle back twelve or thirteen. Seeing none, let's move on to fourteen, SOC.
This was an item that Alderman Bram had asked for more discussion. We did not provide any additional information.
City manager, refresh my memory. Do we? We don't pay SOC anything right now, do we?
We do not. They, they have not issued a general call for dues in some years. They were doing sort of a special assessment when the runway rotation program came up. The village of Bensonville and the village of Oak Grove Village hired individual consultants. And they were looking for contributions. That was a time where our public affairs and safety committee discussed it and decided that ONCC would be a better alternative for the city than SOC.
Okay, Alderman Bram, this is on your circle back. Say again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, according to the budget, I mean, I know it's pretty minimal, but I'm showing $1,500 has been spent over the last three years. I know that wasn't the former membership dues, but there were monies allocated as well as spent in this budget line item. I know, Mr. Mayor, you spoke to this in the last time, or when I made the request to have this put on the circle back. I understand that SOC mission has changed and has moved away from, I guess, our direction and where we would want to go. My concern is, from a strategic perspective, don't we want to have some type of, and this goes back to this $1,500 allocated and spent over the past few years, some type of input, some type of seat at the table with SOC, even though they don't align with our goals, strategically, it might help us with our goals.
Yeah.
And I don't know what the 1,500 is.
Yeah, I will add, and then I'll let City Manager chime in about that. They, I would say they're diametrically opposed to us. They haven't kicked us off. So we remain on unpaid, and we have access to their meetings and whatever they're going to do. They, I do know that in the, in the time I've been involved for the last seven years, they've asked for contributions, first they asked for, for membership dues, which we didn't pay. Then they asked for additional contributions to prove a point that they wanted with regard to studies they wanted to do. And, and for those who don't know, SOC was originally committed to kind of fight O'Hare expansion overall, and then it kind of shifted into fly quiet. And we're obviously, south of the airport, have different ideas and views and needs than the people directly west. So that's, that's the opposition that we run into. We, so they've allowed us to stay on without payment and have our, our ear at the table, if you will. I don't, not sure if we get value of paying for that, but City Manager, you wanted to chime in?
I do, and I hate to do this. I apologize, Alderman Bram. That 1,500, that's a coding error. Tom Trosin just told me that should actually be in 3052. The last time we think we spent money on SOC was 2013 or 2012. So I apologize for that.
Okay, well, that clarifies things. Mayor, you're muted.
Alderman Mulliner? Okay, anyone else? All right, let's move on to Agenda Item 15. I'm sorry, circle back 15, City Manager.
Thank you. This is a question that Alderman Deuter raised regarding a list of the alleys that were in the proposed budget. We have included those, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Deuter, any questions?
No, Mayor. Thank you to Steph for the information. I appreciate it.
Any additional discussion on circle back 15? Let's go to 16.
Thank you. This is regarding the roadway improvements, street paving program that we do each year. Alderman Bram had asked for a breakdown on how we are going to, I'll say, make up what we cut from the budget this year. And so the way we had done, we proposed to do that is to add to the next four years of paving, rather than try to lump it all into one year. And we have that breakdown, and we're happy to answer any questions.
No further questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any additional questions? All right, let's move on to 17.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this is a request from Alderman Deuter to try to put up value on the 180 Park Building, which, as you can see by our, our spread on that, was a little difficult. Certainly, if we, if we're interested in talking about that, we can further break that down. But I would suggest that maybe the results are more of an executive session type conversation if we're going to talk about setting a price for sale.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks to Steph for pulling this information together. I did ask for the information, however, there is no decision to make tonight related to it, nor do I really expect much, much discussion. That said, I did want to understand the likely value of these parcels, 180 Park and the parcels around it, because I see the sale of the city-owned land as an option worth considering as we contemplate difficult decisions related to this budget and those upcoming. As I think about our budget, it seems to me that we have two primary issues. The first is the major hit to revenue that is directly related to the pandemic. In my opinion, it's for events like this that we maintain a prescribed fund balance, and I don't object to using the fund balance as needed. I believe that's what it's there for. The second issue with the budget is the lack of a revenue source for the payment of debt service. We've heard this referenced earlier, related to our most recent stormwater projects. This is an ongoing issue and requires a thoughtful, long-term approach. I would say that unlike the stormwater debt service, the loss of revenue related to the pandemic is a short-term acute issue. If we utilize the fund balance to offset revenue decreases, then the issue is how to replenish the fund balance. In addition to spending cuts and/or tax increases, I'd like to see us think strategically about city-owned property, specifically 180 West Park. The property is a city asset, and I think it's prudent of us to reevaluate possible uses and the feasibility of potential projects, and then analyze the updated information in the context of current and future priorities. Steph estimates the value of these parcels to be between 3 million and 6 million. And I would like to see us either recommit to a plan for this land or contemplate its sale. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments or questions as it relates to circle back 17? Seeing none, let's move on. City Manager?
Thank you. The next one is a question that Alderman Bram raised regarding the new sidewalks. And this is specifically any new sidewalks where an SSA would be established, which essentially would be the funding source, half the funding source for the, the project. We're happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This line item, I think, has had some revitalization, if you will. As we all know, the public comment section of, at least of the bicycle and pedestrian plan has concluded. I know I have received a lot of feedback in regards to areas that do not have sidewalks, installing new sidewalks. And I think the bicycle and pedestrian plan goes a long way of speaking of what is needed throughout the city of Elmhurst. With that said, I am looking forward to, as Alderman Toledo mentioned in a previous discussion topic, wanting to put forth a referral on this topic of maybe some enhancements to our current new sidewalk installation policy, one of which giving the possibility of the city paying 100% for sidewalks for those blocks or, and/or streets that move forward, from the survey, move forward of wanting sidewalks on their block. In order to do that, I would like to see the budget reflect that. And therefore, I would like to change the budget from the, on page 142. I'd like to make a motion on page 142, line item, I'll just say the last four, 80-34, sidewalk improvements from a budgeted value of $50,000 to $100,000 to allow for the ability for change in policy, potential change in policy of the city of Elmhurst paying 100% of any new sidewalk installations.
Okay, we have a motion to increase the line item on page 142, line item 8034, sidewalk improvements, motion to increase from 50 to 100,000. Do I have a second? I don't see a second. City Manager, am I missing anybody?
I don't see one either.
Okay, motion fails due to lack of second. Continued discussion. Alderman Bram, anything else?
I will defer to Alderman Palmsky.
Alderman Palmsky, you have your hand up.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to get into a policy discussion, but I definitely think there could be some changes to our sidewalk policy, including, you know, for example, if a resident is asked a question, would you want sidewalks if they're 100% covered? Then I think we may have different answers on the surveys, and I think there are different scenarios. For example, grants, where if we don't have a mechanism right now, if we are awarded a grant that would allow a resident to receive that grant, or for the city to receive it and not, still not require the resident to pay 50%. So there's one example where we could make it more attractive for residents, and we could put less of a burden on them, but it's not necessarily us shifting in our budget right now. But I definitely think we need to evaluate the policy. Thanks.
Any additional conversation? Seeing none, let's move on to 19. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This was a request from Alderman Kennedy to look at and have further conversation on the prioritization of stormwater projects. We did include a table as Attachment I, and I know that the Public Works Committee has been discussing this, so turn it over to Chairman Kennedy.
Chairman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works continues to go through the, the balance of projects that have yet to be fully vetted. So I think what we've got in the budget for 2021 makes sense, and it will, we'll be taking this information and how we refine projects for the years beyond 2021. Thank you.
Any additional comments as it relates to Public Works, I'm sorry, the Public Works Stormwater Fund as identified in our circle back document? Okay, that, that's it for our circle back document. Is there any additional comments or questions relating to our budget? Assuming we wrap up this meeting in the next 10 minutes. It looks like we accomplished what we were hoping to, which is get through full review of the budget and circle backs. That means, as of right now, at 9:49, we're not going to have a meeting next Monday. That having been said, final questions or comments before I ask for a motion? Alderman Toledo, you have your hand up. Oh, you are, there you go.
Yep, got it. Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I just wanted to make kind of a overarching comment, I suppose, for the council. I wanted to share that during the Finance Committee tonight, the Finance Committee meeting, we did have the opportunity to review the third quarter financial results for 2020. And I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize the City Manager, all of the department heads, and all city employees, for all the work that they did together as a team to help reduce the city expenditures in light of our decreased revenues resulting from the pandemic. All from, all facts that I can see and my own experience with minimal to no reduction in service to our, to our residents. In addition, the city was able to extend various forms of assistance to residents and business owners throughout the year. For example, our program to delay the vehicle sticker deadlines, waiving business license fee collections, and more. With all of those activities, we were happy to see tonight that the majority of our fund balances are favorable versus budget, which is a strong way for us to end the year. I would make a comment that many local and state governments did not reduce spending the way that Elmhurst did, and those cities are now hoping for a bailout or are passing large property tax increases to make up that difference. So I'd like to thank everyone involved for the sacrifices that were made this year. With that said, the pandemic does continue. As I mentioned at the beginning of this process for the budget, I was disappointed to receive this, what I consider a status quo budget. Not only did the budget essentially hold expenditures the same as in prior years, but also the five-year CUB and the 2021, 2022 operating budget highlighted several new spending priorities or revenue needs that will have to be paid for with increased taxes and/or fees on Elmhurst residents. I continue to find that plan unacceptable as it stands today. Many of you on the council have reached out to me with similar concerns, wondering what we should do about it. Thank you for contacting me and your input and your desire to make an impact. I believe that we have an opportunity to look at ways to implement structural changes to how the city operates. These changes would have the effect of materially reducing the city's annual operating cost. In turn, these savings could then be used to help pay for the new spending priorities, reducing the tax and fee burden on residents. Through various discussions and with my own research, several ideas have promised to accomplish this. So I wanted to share with the council tonight that it is my intention to submit a number of these ideas as referrals in the near future. I feel it's important to have these referrals approved before, or minimally in conjunction with the approval of the 2021 operating budget, so that we're providing clear guidance on how we move forward with the city's finances. Thanks very much, and I look forward to working with everyone to strengthen Elmhurst financially now and into the future.
Okay. Anyone else? On that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Let me make sure I'm following my, yes, motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Kennedy. Clerk Tamer?
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Bremis?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hunquist?
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays.
13 ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work. Have a happy Thanksgiving. We are not going to be meeting next Monday, the 30th. I will see you all on the 7th. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.